Let's go ahead and call the admitting to order. And we'll go ahead and do our invocation and our pleasurableisms.
Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, as we celebrate Police Memorial Week, we pray you watch over our police officers and our firefighters. Please guide them as they keep us safe and give them the strength and courage as they serve through their tour of duties. We ask that you bless the families of our police officers and firefighters that have paid the ultimate sacrifice while serving the City of Mission. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) for the United States of America. It is a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice We have a proclamation on the-- lupus, a word response?
Yes, Mayor Council, I'd like to introduce Ms. Velma Garza, who is here with us today to accept the proclamation. And the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas an estimated 1.5 million Americans suffer from lupus, the chronic inflammatory autoimmune disease that can affect various parts of the body, especially the skin, joints, blood, and kidneys. Whereas lupus can be difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses, and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences. Whereas the Lupus Foundation of America Lone Star Chapter is part of a national force devoted to solving the cruel mystery of lupus while providing caring support to those who suffer from its brutal impact. Whereas the chapter rallied the City of Mission community to wear the color purple and to further unify the support for those living with the disease. Whereas awareness is vital in raising funds for research and for those affected by lupus, and it is our responsibility as a community to advocate on their behalf and to further encourage educational programs so everyone affected by lupus can have an improved quality of life. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim May 18, 2018, as Put on Purple Day throughout the City of Mission, and urge all citizens to support the cause of raising awareness of lupus so that we can have a world with no lupus. Proclaimed on this the 14th day of May, 2018.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the Lupus Awareness Fund? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
You'd like to say any words or just? I'd like to thank the City of Mission and everybody that's attended the meeting. These type of proclamations bring awareness to such a debilitating disease that affects myself and my sister. And it went several years before being detected. There's no test that will tell you whether you have lupus. It is simply characteristic symptoms that lead a doctor to think that you have that. Sometimes by the time they figure out you have lupus, it is too late. It's affected your kidneys, and they go into renal failure. And that is why it is vitally important that we bring awareness to our-- it affects women and the Hispanic and African-American community more than any other race. So I am glad that you all are bringing this awareness to your city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Thank you.
Do you want to come over here and accept the proclamation?
(coughing) Over here. George. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. (inaudible). Can anybody look over here at me? Three, two, one. Hello? Thank you. Thank you. I'll reach out to the office so you can help me. Some more, some more. Did you check? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Next proclamation?
Yes, Mayor Council, I don't know if Mr. Gustavo Salinas is here or a representative is here. Okay, you all would like to?
The proclamation, Mayor Council, reads as follows: Whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of the city by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. Whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. Whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. Whereas in 2017, there were 84,712 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abused in Texas, of which 51,314 were confirmed. Whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods, and in suburbia. Whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2018, to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Mission, Texas, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Proclaimed on this the 14th day of May, 2018.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve this proclamation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I don't know if anybody wants to?
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Melissa Castiano. I'm a program administrator with Adult Protective Services, and I'm very proud to introduce our staff. They not only cover the City of Mission, but the entire county of Hidalgo, Brooks, and Starr. We have IPS Supervisor Isabel Caro, Adriana Ibanez, Yessenya Chapa, Crystal Lugo, newest member, Liliana Castaneda did her internship, and then we hired her. And then we have Tommy Olivo. And between all of us, I was counting, we have 80 years total state experience. So we're very compassionate about the work that we do, and we thank you for acknowledging May as Elder Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you for bringing that awareness to the city, to the county, and throughout the state. This is what's happening this month throughout the state. And together, there's just so many cases out there. But together, through law enforcement, through fire department, other social service agencies, we can definitely work together to reduce and prevent elder abuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Do you want to come around over here so we can take a quick picture with Mayor and the council, please?
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Thank you for your service. Do you want to come around over here so we can take a quick picture with Mayor and the council, please?
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Next item is our report from the Mission Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'll begin with recent events. To summarize our workshops and mixers, I'll begin with our April 24 workshop, What's Behind the Numbers. We partnered up with UTRGV, and we had 16 members attend this workshop. On April 25, we hosted a Lenders Resources Workshop in partnership with SBA and Lift Fund, and we had 13 people in attendance. On May 3, we had a member Spotlight Mixer at Vom Foss, and overall, we had 23 people in attendance. On May 4, we hosted a Facebook Advertising Workshop, and we had 33 members in attendance for this workshop. And lastly, on May 8, we hosted an Employee Eligibility Workshop in collaboration with the Department of Homeland Security, Congressman Goyad's office, and the SBA. And overall, throughout the day, we had 53 people in attendance, and we hosted three sessions throughout the day. And summarizing our ribbon cuttings, we had several ribbon cuttings. On May 7, we had a ribbon cutting for mail, fast pack, and ship with 17 people in attendance. On May 8, we hosted a ribbon cutting for the Tortilla La Heria with 29 people in attendance. On May 9, we hosted a ribbon cutting for Bob's Steak and Chop House for their lunch. We had 47 people in attendance. And then lastly, on May 11, we hosted a ribbon cutting for Eiffel Insurance with 11 people in attendance. Next on the agenda is our Buenos Aires Luncheon with Vince Young, which occurred this last Thursday. And I'll be proud to say that we had approximately 400 people in attendance for this particular event. So very, very good attendance, and Vince Young definitely enjoyed, was very, very impressed with the event center. So wanted me to tell you that, Mayor?
Thank you.
In terms of upcoming events, we have a ribbon cutting scheduled on May 16 from 5:30 to 6:30. The event will take place at Cecily's Boutique, and the address is 516 North Sherry Road here in Mission, Texas. And then to wrap up the week, on May 18, we're having a Coffee Connections at the Loretto from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m., and the event will take place at their location with the address 1233 East Griffin Parkway here in Mission, Texas. Also, on May 18, we're having a Facebook Ads Workshop, this time in Spanish, at the Chamber of Commerce from 10 a.m. to noon. On May 22, we're having a workshop titled The Intentional Entrepreneur from 1 p.m. to 5 p.m. at the Chamber of Commerce. On May 23, we're having a ribbon cutting grand opening from 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. for Mission Valley Nursing and Transitional Care, and the address for this event is 1200 South Sherry Road, I mean, South Bryan Road, excuse me. And then last on the agenda is our mixer, May 24 from 6 to 8 p.m. at Hawthorne Suites, and the address is 4801 West Expressway 83. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
There are some department reports in the packet. If you all have any questions, don't hesitate to ask now. If not, we need a motion to approve those reports.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve those reports? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Citizens' participation, do we have anybody from the audience who would like to address the council? Anybody from the audience? State your name and address, please.
My name is Sanwanta Cantu, and I live at 1715 Christie Lane here in Mission. And I'm here in reference to the conditional use permit that is being requested by Snowball Express.
We do have an agenda item for this meeting, so we're going to get to that. It's a public hearing, ma'am.
Okay. I wasn't sure. This is for the conditional use permit, Mayor, that's being requested. It's through a public hearing.
Okay.
It's part of the agenda. Thank you, ma'am.
We'll go on to item for public hearings, and item 1.1A.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of 412 acres near the northwest area of Madero along the west side of Conway Avenue. The property is currently zoned PU-deep, planned unit development, and the intent is to rezonate to light industrial. This is a city-initiated project, and if the council's inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 25, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located near the northwest area of Madero along the west side of Conway Avenue, approximately one mile south of Expressway 83. Mayor and Council, this is the 412 acres that back in 2006 were rezoned as planned unit development by Tony Domit. The project never took off, and with the international bridge coming in the area, the new use will likely be light industrial, which is the zoning that we're requesting here today. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we ask that we go ahead and approve ordinance 4624 and approve the rezoning.
So moved. Second.
Do we have a motion?
Second, Mayor.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, ordinance 4624.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item B?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Hans Katsuya Restaurant. The address is 600 North Sherry Road, Suite D. This is Lot 1 of Es de las Vegas subdivision. The property is zone C3, general commercial, and the applicant is De Bab LLC. And if the council's inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 25, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The proposed 1,488 square foot restaurant is located at the northeast corner of Sherry Road and Sixth Street. Previously, a CUP had been issued at this location in 2005 for a seafood restaurant, Mariscos La Chivas. Mariscos La Chivas has moved out, and the new applicant has taken over the, or leased the vacant restaurant, and is proposing to sell beer and wine at the Japanese restaurant that he's planning to open. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 11 a.m. to 9 p.m. There's going to be a total of four employees manning the operation, and parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. There are also no churches, public or private schools, or public hospitals within 300 feet. Staff is recommending approval. Since there was no opposition at the P&amp;Z meeting, staff is recommending approval for a period of two years at which their CUP and TABC license will need to be renewed. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1B is a public hearing. This item's now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to adopt ordinance 4625 and also approve the conditional use permit.
Want to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at Snowball Express. The address is 1712 West Griffin Parkway, being Lot 22, Block 4 of Oakwood Estate subdivision. The property is zone C3, general commercial, and Snowball Express LLC, in care of Elgin Xavier is the applicant. And if the council's inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April 25, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located approximately 64 feet west of Christie Lane on the north side of Griffin Parkway. This is an exhibit showing what's out there. As you can see, there's a building that has a wraparound building, or a wraparound driveway in which cars go in and out of the lot. People enter, and there's a drive-through window on the east side of the building, and then they proceed to the, they wrap around the building, proceed to the west side where there's another drive-through window, and they pick up their orders. The problem that we had at this particular establishment is that when it was first approved back in 2014, it was submitted with hours of operation till 10:30 p.m. It went through two renewals in addition to the first approval, and they always stated that the hours of operation were till 10:30 p.m. We started getting calls, however, from the neighbors that the operation was indeed open till 2:00 in the morning, and some of these neighbors are here this evening. And this CUP was only authorized till 10 p.m. And the people that lived next door were not complaining about the business. They don't have an issue with the business, but they were complaining about the traffic that was coming in with their loud radios and loud music, and it was disturbing their comfort and their peace in the evening hours when they're trying to get some sleep. So we've never really approved other businesses that are abutting a residential subdivision past 10 p.m. And the P&amp;Z did approve the renewal of this drive-through window, however, they opted to leave it till 10 p.m. only. And they also recommended that they install a grease trap and a fire suppression system because they also serve a lot of fried foods. Started off as a raspa stand, but then it developed into a little bit more, because now there's more items on the menu. So this particular facility is not equipped with a grease trap or a hood suppression system, which is also something that they imposed on them. And they also required that they put a fence along the north side of the property. As you can see there, there's only like a temporary plastic fence, but there needs to be a solid buffer to the residence on the north. And they recommended that the CUP be approved for one more year so that we can see this item again in 12 months to assess how the operations have turned out. Staff is recommending that we approve the conditional use permit, drive-through window, but only till 10 p.m., and that we approve it for one year, as was approved by the P&amp;Z. Our city manager is also recommending approval for one year with the hours up to 10 p.m. only. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request?
Mayor, members of the council, Alex Moreno, I'm representing Mr. Elgin Javier, Elgin Javier, who owns the snow cone stand. And I'd like to tell you that, you know, with respect to some of the things that are being recommended, he's ready to do those, put in the fence that's being requested by P&amp;Z and other items. He was not aware, he had filled out an application for operating the snow cone stand, but he didn't keep a copy of the application. He was not aware of the hours. As his business has been successful, he expanded the time, and he didn't realize that he was in violation. And for that reason, he had come and asked the council to allow him to be open later hours, okay? We do have some neighbors that are here to, in support of the application. I also wanted to show that he has brought me, and he says he's taken pictures, of one drive-through that's across the street from this location, that is a drive-through that sells alcohol and is open after 10 o'clock, okay? There's also another raspa stand, which is on the same side of the street that they're on, and this one is also, this is a picture of it opened at 10:30 at night. So there already are places near this location that are open past the 10 o'clock time that are being talked about. Now, I don't know what their permits say. I haven't had a chance. I just got hired in this case and haven't had a chance to look at all the issues that are out there, okay? What I want to tell you is that my client is willing to do the things that are necessary, but he would like to ask that you all reconsider the time, okay? One of the things that I do want to point out is that his location does not play any music. So any complaints of music are coming from the vehicles that are driving into the location, okay? Some of these other places actually do have music playing, okay? And I would just like to ask, I know that there's several neighbors here, and let me just ask them to stand, okay? The neighbors who are here in support of the application for the hours going to 2:00 in the evening. I've spoken to them individually, and they have told me that they are not bothered by the traffic that's been there. A couple of the persons live very close to this location, okay? They live on Christie Street, which if you saw the map, is right behind the snow cone stand, and they have not had trouble with this. So I would ask you all to consider those things and approve this for that extended on.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to be in favor or against this request?
Against.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Janie Cantu, and I live at 1715 Christie Lane. And I am here to protest the request made by this business, Snowball Express, with the address of 1712 West Griffin Parkway in Mission. They are requesting to stay open till 2 a.m., seven days a week, while using their drive-through service window. I live within 30 to 50 feet of this business and can tell you that they can be a nuisance. This business is not complying with their permit hours to close at 10 p.m. And in the past, we had to put up with a lot of disturbances, one of them being vehicles that have loud motors. While they were waiting to go through the drive-through, they would constantly rev their motors, honk their horns, they would peel out, making loud rev noises. They have, they play loud music, people screaming, being rowdy. This could go on any time between 10 until they close at 2 a.m. or later. It is at this time when people start to get rowdy. It was impossible to sleep with all this noise going on constantly. My husband and I work, and we get up early. I had many days in the past months where I had to work with only a few hours of sleep the previous night. I even missed work because of lack of sleep. My health has suffered for the same reason, and I am now on medications. I pay taxes like everyone else, and I'm entitled to live in a peaceful environment and do not have to put up with these disturbances. I shouldn't have to. My neighborhood has always been peaceful and quiet, and I have never had problems with my neighbors or any of the other businesses nearby. I have nothing against this business or people having fun, but they're in the wrong location for this type of business if they want to stay open till 2 a.m. The business owner cannot control the behavior of his customers. All this nuisance started about two to three months ago. It has been quieter in the past few weeks after we complained about the noise, and they were prohibited from using their drive-through after 10 p.m. But if they are granted permission to open until 2 a.m., again, I'm sure the same noisy situation will arise. As you are aware, there are more of this type of businesses in the city, and if you grant him permission to stay open until 2, you're going to have to give the same other businesses if they desire to stay open till 2. And if they have, there's neighbors there, they're also going to be complaining about the noise. Here where I live, it is also causing traffic hazard as cars line up on the shoulder of 495 to get into their business, and they can block the view of oncoming traffic, and it has happened to us. And they can also block the exit onto 495. And I would also like to point out that after the last meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 25, they were prohibited from using the drive-through after 10 p.m. But there were days when they did not comply and continued to use the drive-through until But there were days when they did not comply and continued to use the drive-through until almost 11 or later. There's real loud vehicles that come by at all hours, I've heard it, the slate is 11:30 or later. You can hear them idling 15, 20 minutes, then they peel out, making a lot of noise. And this can be every night. Mr. Mayor and members of the City of Mission, City Council, I believe it is one of your duties to be sure that the citizens of Mission enjoy a great quality of life. And I have seen many great things happening in the city of Mission. And I thank the mayor and the city council for bringing this about. It is my hope that you will prohibit this business from infringing on my quality of life and that, and that of my neighbors. Because we want to live in peace and quiet as this our right and something that we have enjoyed for more than 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else that would, in favor or against his request? You want to say something?
I just sit next to the room and I'm here.
Okay. Anybody else that would like to address the council in favor or against his request?
Why, sir?
Just state your name and address.
My name is Rosa Castro and I live on 811 Sandstone Drive. And so basically, unlike the previous woman, I've never had a difficulty or any nuisance since the location established. And I've been waking up at 2:30 in the morning to get ready for school because I go to the gym and then I also have class really early. And I pass by that location every morning and I never see a line piled up of cars or I never see disturbance. And I've never really heard any loud music playing from the establishment and I've never had a trouble, me and my family have never had a trouble sleeping or any difficulties.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tony Shepherd. I live at 1717 Christie Lane, next door to Lupin and Mr. Cantu. They are not telling fabrications as to the times. I have sleep apnea. If I'm woke up with a mask and stuff on after I go to sleep, I'm up for a while. This past Saturday, I was, 11:30, I got up because of loud noises. And my dog barked, that woke me up even more so. I woke up to loud noises of engine revs, also music. And like she said, 15 or so minutes there, that vehicle is there. I have nothing to say a guy about the people that are running this, with the exception of what he said, it's one across the street, that's a liquor store. I don't hear any music and stuff over there. There's another one that's down the street from us, which is right there in the next neighborhood. I haven't heard anything from them, just the one that's right here. I have nothing against the people that are running the business, you're entitled to make a living, but when I go to sleep at night, I like to sleep peacefully. And at 2:00 in the morning, put it in your neighborhood and see what you think about it.
I know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Yovana Medina, I'm the general manager from Snowball Express. And I just want to let you know that we are available to work with you, with the workers. We have a lot of new workers, we cannot handle a lot of things, but we're working on it. Like, we know that they have maybe a lot of noise, we're working with the customers as well. We cannot handle the things outside, it's not only us, because there's two drive-throughs on 495 and they're closed 11, 12. They maybe leave from the stand at 1:00, 1:00 in the morning. There's one drive-through, it calls Quick Stop. She told me that she doesn't have any problem, she closes at 1:00 on Saturday. The only problem that she has is the, the street needs light, that's the thing. She doesn't come because she told me she has kids. Well, what I think, we don't have anything bad to do, we can work with the customers. Like, like Jaime said, that we can make the wall, we can make the wall. We do have the grease trap and we're available to work with you guys, like, the things that you tell us to do, we can do it. But we can, we want to work till 2:00 in the morning. We opened Snowball Express since 2006, Elgin got the business in 2010. And we always, since Elgin got the business, we've been closing at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, and we never have any problem. We don't sell alcohol, we never have problems with nobody, we pay taxes like everybody else. And I know, like, the way the lady has her job and she want to take care of her job, does the same way as we want to take care of our job. Because we like it, we like what we do, so I hope you understand that part too. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all need to stand up, whoever wants to speak, please stand up and come up front.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Elgin Xavier, I'm the owner for the Snowball Express. And I would like to thank for the opportunity to talk. The business we started in the Mission, we have expanded-
State your name and address.
Elgin Xavier, 2607 Southwood Street, Fort Texas. Thank you. We have started Snowball Express in 2014 over there by Griffin Parkway. And when we started, we were opening still like 10:30 because it was on a cold time and of course then a raspa stand is on summer time. So we expanded, but I was not aware about the permit that if we go all these hours, it has to close hours. We still, everywhere we open till 1:00 in the morning and we have been doing that. And many of the customers told us after 10 o'clock, there is no place to eat, nothing over there except big chains like Whataburger and McDonald's. And you know, raspas is a tradition of the valley and it's a lot of people coming, the family and everything. After Mr. Jaime told me that those problems from the neighbors, we, we don't have music and we even tell the customers, don't put any music or anything. And I invested a lot of money in the building, I invested, I trust the city of Mission because it's a place to do the business, it's a place to, that's why you open another business too. And I am entitled to give the rights to get, I can put a wall with the soundproof, I can put anything, but I need my right to open my business. I lose a lot of money in, in the businesses because a business sustains, it gives economy to a city, it gives employment to the people. I pay city taxes, I pay property taxes and everything. And I have a lot of payments, I can't afford to close early. And people coming, after we're closing the drive-through after 10 o'clock, it's, it's giving you bad effect. You know, that park over there, they make the sound and they spend more time and they put the music and they hang out more time. If you put the drive-through, they just get thing and they, they go back. This is more easy and convenient for him. And after 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, families come, sometimes they come in little pajamas and they don't want to get out. And it's a, it's a thing, the family in the Mission, they come have a little raspa, a nacho. The dad and mom come, they take a banana split, kids take a raspa. And it's a beautiful thing, it's a tradition of the valley. And my humble request is, do just let us open till 2:00 in the morning. And we cannot suffer that many laws here. And I have two locations in the Mission, the only city I have two locations is Mission. I have location four, I have location Edimbo, I have location Macallan. No one, no one have problems with this kind of thing. I have no neighbors telling that they support me and support this small business. And I have my employees, they work paycheck to paycheck and they have to support their lives too. And this is, we, I can work with you guys, we can do, and please let us open till 2:00 in the morning. This is a humble request, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Lucinda Sarmiento, I'm a worker at Snowball Express. And I just wanted to let you guys know that, I mean, all our clients that go, we ask them if they have an issue or anything. And we also ask the neighbors that are right behind us if they have an issue with us staying open late. And, well, they all say that they don't. And I mean, we don't, we don't have an issue with them being open late because I mean, that's our job and we need our job and, well, we don't sell anything bad and we never have loud music or anything like that. I mean, I recorded a video of the drive-through that's right in front of us and they had very loud music, they have girls like in little shorts and stuff like that till like 12. And I don't think it's fair, like, I don't want to compare, you know, them to us, but it's just not fair, like, that we're just selling, like, stuff like raspas, marinadas, like, stuff like that. And they're selling like things that are, like, worse, like, to the community than us. So I don't find it fair, like, that we have to, like, close at a certain time and, and they don't. Because we're not saying anything bad to the community. And, well, we, just how the lady said that she wants to sleep for her job and stuff like that, well, we, we have our job too. And we, well, we need our hours to work and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name is Marta Hernandez, my direction is 2417 Kimary. Este, y estoy aquí para apoyar, verdad, a los snowballs. No miro ningún, ningún problema en que estén abiertos los dos hasta las 2 de la mañana, ya como se ha dicho, pues hay mucho, la mayoría de los drive-throughs está abierto hasta tarde de la noche, verdad? Y incluso ahí venden bebidas alcohólicas, cosa que ellos pues no hacen. Y estoy aquí para apoyarlo simplemente.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Hi, my name is Adilene Salinas. I used to live in Kimary Avenue, like, right in back of there. And to be honest, I never had a problem there. And now, like, I don't live there anymore, but I, I work there now. So it's like, first of all, I know that she said that we, like, we're open until 2:00. I've been open, like, we've never been open until 2:00. Like, not that I've been working there, we haven't. And then the music, we don't even have any music. People that go there and they have their cars on and everything, we usually go outside and we're like, hey, can, like, can you please keep it down? Because we have neighbors and they, we have to respect them. We do that. So we have been doing that and I don't understand, like, there's, there haven't been any complaints and why now? You know what I mean? Like, why do, why is there complaints now? And there's no complaint whatsoever with the, with the drive-throughs. When they have their music, they have speakers outside, playing their loud music. How come nobody has ever complained there? Hey, I'm not saying anything, but I've seen cops there before, like, actually with the lights on. So something must have gone there, like, something must have gone wrong there. Like, have you guys ever seen, like, okay, maybe they did see the cops there with the lights on because supposedly that we had the drive-through open when we really didn't? And they bring like four cops, four cop car? Like, we're not criminals, we're just doing our job. Just like you guys are doing your jobs, just like everybody has a job here, we have a job too. Hey, yes, it might be just making raspas, but that's how we pay our bills. You, you guys might not see it, like, oh, or like, it's just a raspa stand. But we work every day, we try to make things better, we take consideration of everybody, the neighbors, the clients, everybody. We, we make, we try to be better. And we need, like, us as workers, we need jobs. You guys need taxes, we're working to give you our taxes. You know what I mean? So I just want to, like, I just want to say that, like, it's not like if we're selling drugs or anything. We're just selling raspas, making people's tummies good, you know? Make them feel good, make them feel better, you know?
Thank you very much.
There's some pregnant ladies out there, I mean, they're like, really, they're like, hey, where's my raspa? Like, it's 1:00 in the morning and I really want a raspa and my baby wants a raspa too. Not saying that I'm pregnant, because I'm not. But there's some pregnant ladies that are really, really hungry and you know how pregnant ladies get? I mean, I was pregnant once. I'm pretty sure everybody knows how pregnant ladies get, right? They, if they want their marinada, God, we gotta give them their marinada, you know what I mean? So I'm just saying that it's not like we're selling anything bad. We're just trying to make people happy. I always give a smile to my customers because I like, I like people, you know, like, I like making people happy. That's why I like working there, because I'm, I like giving them their food and they're like, wow, you know?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Hilda Cooyack, yo soy una de las personas más cercanas al, al, al local, al negocio, este, el patio de nuestra casa está muy cerca, nosotros podemos estar ahí afuera conviviendo con la familia y no escuchamos nada de ruido, este, todo está tranquilo, es un ambiente familiar porque nosotros, pues los niños los llevamos ahí, verdad, este, a ellos les gusta mucho ir, las muchachas pues tienen muy buen trato con, con uno como cliente. Para nosotros no es ningún problema, no nos perjudica en nada, no hay ruido, no se escucha música. Podemos estar en el patio nosotros y no escuchamos nada de ruido.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
That, um, there's some, but, um, last one, that's going to say anything, anybody against? Well, we'll go ahead and, que, usted quiere?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es María Hernández, ahorita mi dirección es 1101 W-23 Street, pero antes vivía con mi hermana ahí atrás del negocio de snowball. Y a mí no me molesta para nada el que esté abierto, verdad, hasta la 1:30, 2:00 de la mañana. Porque como dicen las muchachas y como dicen las demás personas en los drive-throughs, están con la música alta y mujeres en shorts y todo, sin embargo, acá las personas y las muchachas que trabajan ahí todo son bien respetuosas y andan bien vestidas y pues mientras que no se venda alcohol, yo pienso que, que no hay ningún problema. Y pido por favor, verdad, tengo apoyo.
Thank you.
Gracias.
That, um, we're going to call it there and ask the recommendation from planning and zoning and staff is as follows. The recommendation is to approve of the CUP subject to hours and operations of the drive-through ending at 10:00 PM. Install a proper grease trap and supervision system. Installed six-inch solid buffer fence is required along the north side of Lot 22 and a one-year approval. The staff is recommended denial, extended hours, but approval of the drive-through renewal. So that's your recommendation and the staff. So what's the wish of the council?
Mayor, I have a real quick question. Can you go over to the picture beforehand? This one right here. Is that where they contain their trash?
That's an older picture we did, that's, it's still in that condition today. One of my inspectors went out there today to see if anything had changed and he said, well, the only thing that's changed is as of today, there's more trash on there. But that's their trash bin there on the property.
Aren't they required to have a commercial-
A dumpster.
A dumpster?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can we put that on the requirements as well to have a dumpster?
I think it is a commercial dumpster, you just can't see it.
Oh, my goodness, really?
Yes, it's underneath all that stuff.
Now, the, the blue one, I mean, there will be, will not be there.
Which one?
The dumpster in there?
Is it the green container?
The dumpster that's the, no, it's, that one. They put it through the guy so they can put it bags for the-
I guess that's the recycling area, there's another dumpster.
So where's the?
Where do you have it?
Oh, there, it's in the front, on the area there.
Okay, there it is, yeah.
How often?
The council, please, stop over on the side of the building too.
Great, what's the wish of the council?
Mayor, I move to, to approve the conditional use permit as presented and as recommended by the planning and zoning board.
Second, and mayor, I have a question from Mr. Acevedo. I think the attorney made a valid point, we need to go ahead and go back and see all the other businesses that are in the surrounding area. And if we're going to be making this at 10 o'clock, then we should probably revisit so that it could be consistent across the board.
Yes, we did look at the raspa stands and one of the things that we did when we were evaluating this particular location was that we, we went to Squinkles, we went to all the other raspa stands that have a CUP in the city of Mission. And for the most part, everybody, with the exception of, of the applicant, closes at 10:00 PM. I mean, sure, staff stays a little bit afterwards to clean up and, and so forth, but for the most part, all of them did close at 10:00.
The other drive-throughs are close the street?
Well, the one that they're referring to is not a raspa stand, mayor, the one that they're referring to is a drive-through service window, like, like a convenience store. And the problem really with this particular unit is that the stacking of the vehicles and the other particular raspa stand that they mentioned, staff did observe that people go in and out. When you go to a raspa stand, when, when a family shows up in a car and makes a large order, it takes them 15, 20 minutes to prepare an order. So that's what's causing the stacking of all the vehicles. Nothing is already made, everything gets prepared as you order it. So that's the issue with- Uh, so that's the issue with, with this particular drive-through window.
And the stacking is happening on, on a highway, it's actually on the shoulder?
Yeah, we showed a, a little clip that our court enforcement officers took and, uh, the cars are backing up all the way past Christie Lane. Uh, they're using the shoulder as their stacking area, which is, it shouldn't be happening. And, uh, the other businesses that sell the alcohol, um, are, is a drive-through business where people go, they order a couple of things and they're on their way. There's no stacking issue, that's the problem with this location, the, that the people that are waiting in line have their rails on, their engines revving. And, uh, the people that are coming to the restaurant are causing the disturbance to the neighbors.
So, so your, your store across the street that has a drive-through, are you gonna hold them to ten o'clock at night also or is hours about eleven o'clock?
I need to check that conditional use permit, I believe they're open till twelve.
I think, mayor, I think that, I'm asking Mr. Acevedo to bring back anything in that area and their hours of operation, that way we can come back and see so that we can have some consistency.
Well, I think it's eleven or twelve. So what are you gonna do with them?
Right now, they're, they're approved beyond ten, ten P M.
I know, I know it's, I know it's about twelve o'clock.
It's about twelve o'clock, yes.
So you're gonna hold them down to ten, to ten o'clock?
We're gonna have to reconsider the conditional use permit.
It's a conditional use permit, so the city can bring them back to revisit the conditional use permit and whatever the wishes of the council is at that moment, we can look at that.
We can, we can certainly do that.
But that's a store, they don't have that much traffic. Would you all like to close at eleven?
Mayor.
Can you all agree to go, close at eleven?
Mayor, if I could say one comment, they, I know there's only two people against.
I know.
But I have received over five phone calls from neighbors in that area.
No, but I got some calls also.
That are losing sleep, just different things.
We have a motion on the floor, second.
Well, there's a motion on the floor and the recommendation. Um, all those in favor of the motion, stick the form a say nay?
Aye.
How many are there? Aye, 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 I go along with the council. More should carry, so, the recommendation is to close at ten o'clock. And to, um, and the approval of the extended, uh, drive-through renewal. Anything else, you all will have to come back to the table and work with our planning department. Item D.
Thank you, mayor and council, item one point one D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at Snowball Express number two. This is, uh, the same applicant, but this is the location at thirty-one twenty-four North Mayberry Road being a one point twenty-seven acre out of the west, three hundred and ten feet and the north, two hundred and twenty-four feet of lot twenty-eight dash nine West Editioner Shoreline subdivision. The property is owned C two and the applicant is Snowball Express LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Mayberry Road and East Mile Two Road. And, uh, mayor and council, this is the same type of business, same owner. Uh, the difference with this particular location is that it's a little bit bigger, it's a lot bigger actually. Um, the applicant, however, still has an issue with the amount of traffic that is coming to the drive-through windows. Uh, it seems that everybody that visits the raspa stand prefers to wait in line than to actually get off and order and be on their way. Uh, we've seen traffic backed up on Mayberry Road, which, uh, has a turning lane to Two Mile Line. So, uh, like the previous location, there's cars that are, um, also stacking along in Mayberry Road, a public road. And, uh, we've already alerted the applicant that the lot is big enough that he needs to install additional parking areas so that he can circulate the, the traffic and keep him off Mayberry. Now, the applicant did said that he's engaged with the local contractor to expand on the paved area of his lot. Uh, like the previous request, uh, the applicant has been in operation at this location for one year. And, uh, the hours of operation when they initially applied to the city were Monday through Friday from one P M to eight P M. And then Saturday and Sunday from twelve P M to nine P M. However, he's requesting that he be granted extended hours till two A M. The Planning and Zoning Commission held the, the meeting, there was nobody that showed up for this particular item in opposition. However, uh, we did receive calls against the proposal. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the CUP subject to the hours of operation of the drive-through window ending at ten P M. Uh, they also requested that they install, uh, some new landscaping, some of the landscaping that was in place had already died out, I believe. And, uh, that they install additional parking lighting because it was dim. They wanted additional lighting for the people that are getting off and parking. And they recommended that the conditional use permit be approved for one year so that we can, uh, reevaluate this, uh, drive-through window CUP. Staff is recommending denial of the extended hours but approval of the drive-through window for a period of one year, as is our city manager. With the hours of operation, uh, up till ten P M only. This is a public hearing, item one point one D is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request?
Again, mayor, commissioners, uh, Alex Moreno, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Elgin Javier. Your honor, we, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, get used to being in court. Uh, this, uh, this application, uh, again, hasn't had the controversy that the other one has. But, uh, we certainly understand that there are difficulties and my client has indicated a willingness to do all of the things that the, uh, planning and zoning has recommended. Uh, specifically, they're looking at, uh, more paving, at, uh, putting in landscaping. And, uh, to try to do something about that problem of the traffic backed up into the street. You know, the other problems may be problems of management, the, the, how long the lines are, and those are things that need to be looked at and discussed. Uh, I just very recently got hired and so I haven't had time to go through with my client about those things. Uh, I had come here with the idea of trying to ask for a postponement till I found out that at least one of the permits had already, uh, expired and really it had needed to move forward, so we're proceeding and, uh, you know, I, I think that, uh, if there was a way of putting, putting this off, that we might be able to come to some resolutions on things and also do some uniformity in the way that these are carried out across the city, okay? I certainly think that, you know, i- if there's people being bothered by noise and things, there are ways of setting up fences that will restrict the noise, okay? None of that has been explored here, we're just, we're going on the basis of the old technology, the, the very ancient ways that people did things. But there's more modern ways of doing it that are better for everybody, if we had a chance to sit and work on some of those. So I would, I would ask you that if you can figure out a way to try to give us time to try some of those different things, right? Maybe we can come to a resolution of this that would be, uh, both satisfactory to the citizen's submission and satisfactory to my client, okay? But he's willing to do the things he needs to do to try to get his business there, again, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to address council? In favor or against this request? This is on the Two Mile Line.
Excuse me?
This one's on the Two Mile Line.
Yes, um, I wanted to. Yeah, Mayberry. Um, I just, I wanted to ask you guys if there's any type of way that we, they could, or that Elgin could hire like a security guard? Like, cause I've seen security guards, like, at places like the flea markets or like other places, and they have a security guard. And what that security does is try to make two lines instead of just one. Cause I mean, Mayberry is really big, so they could have two lines so that way the cars won't be all the way out in the street. So I don't know if that's like, I'm trying, I wanna know if there's anything that, like, we could come to a, like a conclusion, something like that. So we could hire a security guard and that way we won't be using the shoulder of the city or, what, I don't know what that's called.
Like, for burgers, there is, uh, the customers come to us, they complain, they have drunk people on Fridays and Saturdays, they're making some. So there's always cop there, you know, trying to come down there. Uh, I would like to know if there is, we can, you know, post, uh, off or we can post security, there's some abuse, people on the board and everything.
How many people from Mayberry are here?
I have a neighbor, um, he's my neighbor from Mayberry. Hi, my name's Olga Estadio, I'm the manager from, uh, Snowball Express there in Mayberry. Um, this is one of my neighbors, can you stand up please, can you come please? Um, he's one of my neighbors, uh, right, uh, next door to the Snowco scan. Uh, can I have the papers?
So, so I live like a walking distance from this establishment. And, um, okay. Eight hundred and eleven cents, don't worry. Okay, so yeah, I live, uh, like, walking distance from this establishment and, um, I mean, there's really nothing, uh, wrong with this establishment at all. The lighting, um, by the times I've been there, it's never been an issue. I go there sometimes late at night, you know, nine, ten, it's already dark. And, uh, the dimming, it's never been like that dark or dim either, it's always pretty well lit. And, um, the thing about where the cars pile up in the shoulder lane, um, well, I take the bus to school, so when I walk back, I have to cross, uh, B two library to get to my house. I have to walk through Veterans and, uh, man, that time is the busiest and there's never really a, a line, you know, going through the shoulder. It's always mostly people parking inside and getting off. And the times that it does pile up, cars quickly go through and, um, sometimes I have seen cars, um, kind of like squeeze through and kind of like two lanes so they can have like more waiting space.
Okay, thank you.
Um, like Jose Castro, I do have here a paper of all of my neighbors surrounding the area of the Snowball, uh, the Snowball Express on Mayberry. Uh, which all have signed with the address, um, and the address, the sign and the date, um, to who they're not bothered or have any problem with the, the stand there in my location. Um, I do have, I, I didn't get a time to, um, I don't know the lady, but, um, I have contact, uh, his name is, um, Arturo J. Gonzalez, he works for Alliance Protective Services. He used to work also for the Delias on forty-five, back when they had the small business. Um, he is, uh, uh, make charge of, uh, the problem with the lanes and the cars and the traffic and all of that. Um, and as you can see, uh, can you go back to the picture? Um, I was seeing that, uh, Mr., I'm so sorry, what was your name? Acevedo, yes, had mentioned something about the landscape, um, to which I, I do have, uh, recent pictures of all my landscape, which are green. None of them has died, as you can see there, there's only about those two trees that are, uh, have a little bit less leaves, but all of them are in good condition right now. All of my landscape is alive. Um, I do have fans all the way, I believe that is, uh, okay, you see the, in the back, the, the, the fence wasn't full, uh, complete yet, but it was under work. I do have recent pictures of all my, um, the, the back fence and the side fence as the city, um, had, uh, asked to have. I just have a picture, hold on. This is, this is, the, the fence already finished from the back and the side, that was in progress. Um, it's already done and fixed. I do also have, um, like I said, in, in my area, um, can you show the one, um, from the whole location? Um, no, there, that one. Um, I do have more space in that location, allows me about from fifteen to twenty cars inside the property when in line. I have four drive-through windows that allows me to get the orders faster as well out. I mean, customers do wanna go and get their raspas or snacks as quickly as they can because they wanna go home, correct? Um, also, uh, I have parking spaces available in that area and the one in the back is on progress as well to get, uh, uh, by the, I'm sorry. And I have recently, about, uh, three weeks ago, I have numbered all of my, um, parking spaces, so you can see this picture, I don't know if it's, uh, visible. Um, in order for us to stop having that traffic area, which is never a problem, like I said, I have the space sufficient enough for the line not to be in the road. Sometimes it does that, but because people sometimes just in a rush pile out, but, um, I did this, a number of the parking spaces to fix the problem. When, uh, I do have clients and customers, um, backing up the, the line, I have my employees park the cars in numbers. That way we can know who got there first in order to get the line moving in and have it out, like, not in the traffic area or the road or the line shoulder. Um, and like I said, I have all my signatures from my neighbors that have no, zero problems whatsoever, um, with my business, music or cars or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, first recommendation, um, the recommendation to, to, on Two Mile Line and Mayberry is the same as the first one?
Yes, mayor.
Then, um, what are the wishes of the council?
Mayor, I'd like to motion to go ahead and approve what our planning and zoning has requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we go ahead and approve, um, ordinance forty-six twenty-seven. And that is the recommendation of planning and zoning and staff and the drive-through to be open till ten. All those in favor, signify by say nay?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I think that, um, Elgin, you need to meet with the staff, maybe on this side, that is, um, big size and, and actually you don't have very many complaints on Mayberry, but maybe you can meet halfway to about twelve o'clock later on. I don't think two o'clock is gonna go very easy on planning and zoning and this commission. So if you want to meet later, and maybe on this side, we can probably, my recommendation would be to probably let you open till twelve. And only on this side in Mayberry. I think on four ninety-five, you have a lot of, a lot of cars and a lot of neighborhoods. So on this one, if you want to, we could meet later and talk about it and see if you would wanna do that. But right now, the process will have to start all over again and go into planning and zoning again and see if we can convince planning and zoning to go ahead and let you open till twelve on Mayberry.
And then, um, mayor, if I have a question, Mr. Acevedo, they were given over a year for that fence, right?
They were given a year for that fence and it wasn't up until recently that they finished that fence.
It's completely finished?
Completely finished.
The one on the east side.
The one on the east side.
On the east side.
Well, you also have to, you know, meet us halfway. The fence took a little bit too long according to them.
Landscape.
Landscape.
Do we go back to item C, uh, we didn't make, we didn't have a motion on, uh, on the, um, on the ordinance forty-six twenty-six. Do you want another motion? The cover twenty, huh?
We did. For C, we did, for D, we haven't.
Okay. Thank you very much and we'll go on to item E.
Okay, thank you, mayor and council, item one point one E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages at La Mansión Ballroom and Catering. The address is five hundred and seven North Conway Avenue, lot eight, block ninety-two of the Mission Regional Townsite subdivision. The property is owned C three and La Mansión Ballroom and Catering LLC in care of Norma Gilara is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand eight, in eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located just off the northwest corner of Conway and Fifth Street. The banquet and conference center is used for such events such as weddings, reunions, birthday parties and seminars. Uh, the building itself has a total square footage of about forty-six hundred square feet. With regards to parking, the property is in the Mission Central Business District. With regards to parking, the property is in the Mission Central Business District, which is exempt from the parking requirements, but there are several parking, uh, lots that are in the area and parking has not been an issue. The hours of operation for, uh, these events, uh, tip, are typically in the evening hours from about seven PM to two AM and, uh, the sale of alcohol does need to be three hundred feet away from the nearest residence and in this particular, uh, case, the, it's measured from the front of the building to the front of the other house or the nearest house and, uh, we do want to report that it was about four hundred and fifteen feet away and about five hundred feet away from the church. So it's exceeding the three hundred foot spacing requirement. We did ask PD for, uh, a, a report to, to give us, uh, any indications if there's been any issues at this particular location and there was none to report. There was no public opposition during the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP until November twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, at which time their TABC license will need to be renewed and their conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval, this is a public hearing item. Item one point one E is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone in favor or in opposition? One more time, anyone in favor or in opposition? There being none, is there a question or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
And, uh, that would be the, to approve the conditional use, uh, permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at La Mansión Ballroom and Catering at five oh seven North Conway and also to approve ordinance forty-six twenty-nine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Monday, I'm sorry, that was twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Yes. All right, okay. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council. Item one point one F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages at Calos Salon de Eventos. The address is fifteen sixteen East Expressway eighty-three, su- suite K being lots five and five J, five K and five L of St. Plaza subdivision. The property is owned C three and the applicant is Corinthians Calos Salon de Eventos LTD. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located four hundred feet south of US Expressway eighty-three along the west side of Stewart Road within a commercial plaza. The nine thousand two hundred and forty square foot social event center was most recently approved for a conditional use permit in January eleventh, two thousand seventeen and, uh, at this time they're seeking reconsideration. The hours of operation for the most part, uh, is from six PM to two AM, typically on Fridays and Saturdays. A total of six, uh, staff members operate the facility and they also hire outside help for the larger events. Parking and landscaping are meeting and, uh, are existing and meet code and section one point five six three A of the zoning code requires that such uses be three hundred feet from residential areas. There are residential areas within the three hundred feet, so a separation, uh, waiver will be needed. There was no, uh, public opposition during the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years at which time the CUP and TABC license will need to be renewed and we're also recommending a waiver of three hundred foot separation requirement. Our city manager is also in favor of this request, this is a public hearing item. Item one point one F is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit at Calos Salon de Eventos? Anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, there's no one, is there a question or?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Calos Salon de Eventos at fifteen sixteen East Expressway eighty-three. Uh, ordinance number would be forty-six twenty-nine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council. Item one point one G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a restaurant, The Drunken Chicken in a property zone C two neighborhood commercial at one oh four North Mayberry Road, Suite A of Lot fifty-two, Mayberry Plaza, Unit number two subdivision. The property is owned C two neighborhood commercial and the applicant is Jose A. Cantu Junior. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Mayberry Road and First Street. Uh, the property has a commercial building, uh, or a commercial strip with several different businesses, one of them being a flower shop, another barber shop and this particular, uh, neighborhood restaurant. A conditional use permit was approved for this use back in April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. The hours of operation are Tuesday through Saturday from eleven thirty AM to seven PM. A total of six, uh, employees man the operation and parking and landscaping are existing and meeting code. There was no public opposition during the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for three years at which time the applicant will have to reapply for consideration. Our city manager is also recommending approval, this is a public hearing item. Item one point one G is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit? Anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition? There is none, is there a question?
I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to, um, approve the conditional use permit as presented by staff, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And this would also be for, with ordinance, approving ordinance number forty-six thirty.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, all against or in opposition, say aye.
Four.
Four.
Aye.
We already said aye, right?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Ms. Mayor Protem, I'd like to say something.
Yes.
Um, the restaurant is awesome, I love little restaurants like this that are run by our community members and if you all haven't gone to try it, I suggest you do, they have the best chicken.
Very good.
The drunken chicken.
It's too bad we didn't get samples.
Thank you, Erica. You should have brought samples.
You should have brought samples.
Good luck, sweetie.
Okay, all right. See? Okay, uh, next item, hi, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council. Item one point one H is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages at, at Adelis Event Center. This is at eighteen oh nine West Griffin Parkway, lots nine through eleven, Southern Oaks, Phase One subdivision, the property is owned C three, general commercial and the applicant is Adelis Event Center LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located five hundred feet west of Inspiration Road along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The existing seven thousand two hundred square foot building, um, is currently used as a banquet party hall for such events such as weddings, reunions, birthday parties, seminars, et cetera. The last approval for this particular item was in two thousand sixteen, October of two thousand sixteen and at which time, one of the concerns that was brought up by the city council was the lack of lighting in the parking area. There was other issues that were addressed, uh, such as landscaping, but those were resolved, but there was still wasn't enough lighting. Uh, go back, Virgil, to the picture, as you can see there, he, the, the owner or the applicant installed two, uh, parking lights that have, uh, several lights on each pole that point in all four directions and he also installed some wall packs on top of the building, you can see them there pointing down on the rooftop, uh, to provide additional lighting for the area. So he has complied with, um, what the city council wanted him to do. The hours of operation are typically Fridays through Sundays from six PM to twelve AM and Saturdays from six PM to one AM. And, um, there was no public opposition during the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP subject to the waiver of three hundred foot separation requirement to the residential neighborhood and that the CUP be valid until January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, at which time the applicant will have to renew his TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval, this is a public hearing. Item one point one H is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the item? Anyone here in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit? There is no one, is there a question or?
I just have a question, what about on landscaping on this facility?
On landscaping, you really can't see it, but there's some islands or some, and some medians, um, where the applicant has installed some, some palm trees. There's no, I mean, the, the applicant is not the developer, I know the developer should have been.
How long was that picture? Had they fixed the parking, parking lot?
He's, he's right behind you.
So, um, our part for landscaping is a ditch. Where we can't do any landscaping is state, they won't let us touch that. Where the sidewalk is, all that is state. So our part of landscaping is a ditch, we put about twelve different palm trees, they have died, um, there's only about nine of them that are left because in the ditch, pues toda la tierra se mete y no se alcanza a utilizar. I'm not the owner of the whole plaza, but I have put an irrigation system throughout the whole plaza and the bill comes to me. I'm not the owner of the whole plaza, but I did lighting on both sides of the plaza, so now the whole plaza is lit up. We are going into renovation at that new venue down the street, which is right next to the one on the other side. And what we're planning to do is we hired, um, very expensive landscaper that's going to come in and basically tell us what we can do to better do a curb appeal, we are going to bring a three D design so we can show it up here, do a three D model, bring it to you guys, present it and somehow, some way be approved, I don't know if it has to be done through you and state at the same time, where we can work around it, it's going to be to better it and make it look beautiful.
Thank you.
But are we required to have any landscaping, Martin?
I don't know if it's required now, but I want it, I want it to look beautiful and it, it just looks standard.
That's why I think it would have been better to bring that recommendation, you're not along with the permit request, I mean, if, because you know, look at what happened with the other individuals, you know, if we don't emphasize it at the beginning, I mean, they're not going to get it done.
Yeah, so, um, the landscaping that was required has been done. This is just something extra that I want to do to make it look nicer.
I know, went to a party there and there was a pile of dirt, I mean, the parking lot, it was a lot of potholes, my, I'm what's.
I think you were doing some renovations to the parking lot.
Yeah, at that time when, when it was the Hino's party, yeah. So, um.
And you really don't have a lot of space for landscaping that.
It's just those two islands basically and that very last one that was over there. We used to have another one, which is right there where that new blacktop is, um, but the gentleman who has that drive-through, or not the drive-through, it's a, that muffler shop in between has put, has, uh, put roundup and basically just killed every single piece of grass that I had planted there.
And I'm just asking, Mayor Protem, because for other plazas like this, I mean, are we gonna, I think it's important for us to require some landscaping.
Okay. I think we need to look at when the, um, the actual, the actual comes in, uh, as far as the site plan, we need to have allowances for landscaped areas, but there's really, there's really nothing you can do.
In his case, it's very restricted because of the right-of-way of the state.
Right.
The four ninety-five, uh, uh, right-of-way is, uh, puts him in a very restrictive area, you know, and, and because he has his, uh, his parking lot right next to it, the, the actual place to, to use for landscaping is very, very small.
See, what's happening right now is that you're trying to impose this on a gentleman who's renting and leasing the space out. This should have been done at the time when the builder came to get the permit for the construction. A set of plans should have been done for landscaping and a, in a, um, uh, order to go ahead and, and start using the building shouldn't have been issued until the landscaping was complete. So I think it's very unfair that, that we try to do this to this gentleman when we should have done this in the, in the beginning state, so I'm going to ask that you, Jaime and staff, make sure that we don't give the certificate of occupancy until that landscaping is complete to the liking of what our policy, uh, has in place.
It's true. Martin, and that's why I'm bringing it up, because not just necessary for this, because it's already done, but for future development.
Right.
I mean, the way you required at our, our industrial park and, and for residential, residential minimum, they had to have one tree or, and, you know, and, I mean, and I don't see that much on commercial.
You know, we've been, uh, the practice now is to hold them up until everything's in place. All right.
Those conversations have taken place or in, um, the, uh, new administration from planning and zoning has been taking care of that in the latest permits that we've been issuing out.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, have a beautiful afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, Anna. All right, next item?
Mayor Protem, Council, item one point one I is a public hearing for discussion and action amending ordinance number forty-five seventy-six, amending various portions of chapter eighty-six, section eighty-six, forty-six subsection D two and section eighty-six one fifty-three subsection five E and section eighty-six dash one fifty-four subsection five E of the mission code, uh, sign, or the signs of mission code of ordinances. And if the council is inclined to approve this, uh, sign ordinance, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider amending various portions of chapter eighty-six, which deals with the signs that are allowed in the city of Mission. And, uh, one of the changes that took place back when we last revisited the sign ordinance was that we imposed a spacing, um, a separation requirement of twenty-five feet from one sign to another sign and this caused some confusion with the property owners in Mission because some people weren't sure if that meant twenty-five feet for a city election or twenty-five feet for a school board election and, uh, there was just confusion and the, the citizens, the property owners where political signs are placed, weren't really sure what they were allowed to do or what, or what was in city code. So to avoid that confusion, um, we were, we have revised the, the sign ordinance and we've removed that component with, uh, with the twenty-five foot separation requirement. Uh, the planning and zoning recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager, this is a public hearing item. Item one point one I is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in favor or in, uh, in opposition to the ordinance amending, um, to the amendment of ordinance number forty-five Anyone here in favor or in opposition of this item?
One.
There being none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to amend ordinance number forty-five seventy-six, uh, that would be an adopting ordinance number forty-six thirty-two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council members. Item J is public hearing and substantial amendment for action plan two thousand seventeen eighteen. This item is a public hearing to solicit comments on the substantial amendment to the one-year action plan two thousand seventeen eighteen. The amendment deletes activity for Hero's Haven funded at two thousand dollars and allocates funds to a new activity for the Boys and Girls Club to provide partial waivers of summer program fees for at-risk youth and low-income youth. No comments were received during the required thirty-day coming period, which ended on May seventh, two thousand eighteen. This is a public hearing item only.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak, um, in reference to the amendment for the action plan of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen? Anyone here to speak? Yeah? No?
Thank you.
All right, is there?
I move to approve.
There's no action.
There's no action?
There's not an action.
All right.
It's later on the agenda.
Later on the agenda, okay, thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearing. So we'll move on to the disposition of minutes and we have city council minutes of April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next item is the acknowledgement and of the receipt of minutes for the following, um, meetings. Mission Education Development Council, February twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Animal Rescue and Adoption Advisory Board, March eighth, two thousand eighteen. Traffic Safety Committee, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Mission Economic Development Authority, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Mission Economic Development Corporation, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Zoning Board of Adjustments, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen and April fifth, two thousand eighteen. Mission Redevelopment Authority, March the twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, March eighteen. Mission Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, March twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Planning and Zoning Commission, April the eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Citizens Advisory Committee, April tenth, two thousand eighteen. Mission Civil Service Commission, April nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to acknowledge the receipt of the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Mayor Protem, uh, council. Good afternoon. Item four point one is election of Mayor Protem, and this is in accordance to section three point zero five of the city charter. The city council at its first meeting after election of council persons shall elect one of its numbers, Mayor Protem, and he shall perform all the duties of the mayor in the absence and disability of the mayor. This item is now before you.
Okay. Here's, discussion or motion?
No, right.
Can we nominate?
Yes, that's what.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Mr. Ruben Plata.
And I nominate Nori. I thought maybe it was gonna be.
Is it you?
I nominate Nori, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second, uh, Norris.
All right, uh, I guess there's a motion and a second?
Yeah, so, of course, we take Dr. O'Kanya's motion.
To take Dr. O'Kanya's motion. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Yes, I can continue then?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor Protem, item four point two is approval of ordinance number forty-six thirty-three. This is calling a runoff election, uh, in Mission, Texas, and this will be the runoff election for mayor and city council place four. The election will be held on Saturday, June the ninth. Early voting will be conducted at Mission City Hall and at the Celestina Ramitas Fire Station, number three. We'll begin early voting on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, from seven to seven. Uh, Wednesday through Friday will be eight to six. Saturday, uh, June the second will be eight to five. Monday, June the fourth, eight to six, and Tuesday, June the fifth, seven to seven. Election Day polling locations will be Mission High School, Bryan Elementary, and Celestina Ramitas Fire Station, number three. Those hours being from seven to seven. Uh, this will be the citywide voting like it was, um, in this last election. That's what we'll be doing. So, anybody can vote at any location on, uh, on early, on election day. So, staff and city manager recommend approval of these dates and hours.
Okay.
I, uh, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Normally, we have five sites, uh, so for the public to know, why did we reduce it to three?
Um, this was just more, I was getting, we were getting with the county, and because they have these runoff elections and our elections and the, the machines have to kind of be, uh, secured for several, uh, amount of time. And in the previous years, in those two locations on a runoff, we probably have like about a hundred votes in, um, those two locations. And since we're, uh, citywide voting now, we don't have to have a location in the certain precincts and the divisions that we have.
So, can we reduce the early voting to one site?
If you also choose.
You know, instead of having two sites, it's just one site, if anybody can, can come and vote from any, any precinct, early voting.
Yeah, early voting is like that, um, you know, that you can vote at, at any location. Um.
And we can save money.
Well, I, I know that there's a lot of, um, you know, we do have a, a good number of, uh, voters over there at the, you know, they're used to having, uh, a location on the east side and then, you know, us being the central.
Only one location?
Yeah, just city, city hall. I mean, we're reducing it on the day of the election to, from five to three. You know, I mean, the, uh, the people from South Mission are not gonna have the voting place on, uh.
I can ask, I can ask the school district because a lot also hinged with, you know, there's no, the schools are closed at that time. So, and I know they were putting it before their board, I believe it was in today's meeting, uh, so that they can open up those locations. I could check with, uh, Ms. Cruz. Uh, I don't know if they're gonna have another meeting.
I need to know what the other council.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to keep the two early vote locations, only because we've always had that, that location for, for early vote.
Okay.
On all the elections.
We've also had the other five before, you know, so.
For early voting?
On election day.
Yeah, we can, we're gonna do something different.
Pearson and Castro.
Pearson and, well, could we, cause they're basically in the same.
In the same area.
Do we have maybe, um.
You want me to look into opening up Castro?
Either Castro or Pearson. Which one would, do you think would be more?
I, I think Castro would be a.
Yeah, because Pearson, the last time, I think we had like twenty-eight voters, um, on, on, um, on the runoff on election day, that, that, that was about all that we had. Correct me if I'm wrong, Miss Nelly, I think that was our number. And I think at Castro, we maybe had like fifty-eight or fifty-nine, something like that.
Something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Let's, let's, let's try to keep Castro open.
You want me to, okay, I can, um, I can check with the school district.
Is that, what, is that okay with you guys? Yeah, okay. So.
So, are you gonna keep it open, or you still need to get approval?
Well, we need a, we need to approve.
To approve, uh, to have the four, four locations.
Four locations for.
For, uh, election day.
Election day and two locations.
And two for early voting, yes.
To approve.
Okay. All in, uh, second, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number forty-six thirty-three, calling for the runoff election and having two locations for the early vote and four locations for election day.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Uh, yes, this is, reschedule the May twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen city council meeting to Tuesday, May twenty-ninth of two thousand eighteen, and this is due to the Memorial Day holiday being on Monday, May the twenty-eighth.
So moved, Mayor Protem.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reschedule the May twenty-eighth meeting to May the twenty-ninth due to the holiday on, uh, the Memorial Day holiday. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Joe vote?
Yes, aye.
Yes, 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 okay. All right, next item.
Uh, four point four is authorize a mayor to execute the renewal contract with the Department of State Health Services Program Vital Statistics. This is a continuation of the existing contract we, we have with, um, with the state, and this is for the issuance of out-of-town birth certificates. It allows us to use the remote system to, uh, be able to help the citizens to receive a birth certificate if they were born outside of Mission. Uh, this contract will be through August thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to execute the renewal contract with the Department of State Health Services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item. Mr. Gutierrez?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council. I'm, uh, seeking authorization to purchase a John Deere three twenty-four K loader via byboard five fifteen dash sixteen. Uh, the John Deere tractor will be used for the air burner site. Estimated cost is ninety-nine thousand five hundred and ten and ten cents. Staff and, uh, city manager recommend approval.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a, the courtesy phone call, was it done to the?
We, we did, we did visit the John Deere here in, uh, Mission, and we went to West Loco. They deal just with farm equipment, being that it's just, just John Deere and these, these tractors are, are, they, they do have backhoes, but they don't have these big ones.
Thank you for your time.
That we have required. Yes, sir.
Before you continue, I'm just to let you know, a quick update. The next, this purchase and the next two following requests have to do with the air burner site that, uh, we have been working on for a while. Finally, TCQ gave us the actual, uh, permit to go ahead and, and use that, uh, burner. So, we're just getting ready to buy the capital improvements for those things.
And we approve them in all three at one time, or do we have to go one?
No, it's gotta be one, one in each, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Um, so the item on the, the table right now is to approve the John Deere three twenty-four K loader.
So moved.
Second.
There's a, okay, motion and a second to approve the purchase of the John Deere three twenty-four K loader. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Thank you. Item, uh, four point six, authorization to purchase, purchase a John Deere, uh, five forty-four K loader via byboard five, five fifteen dash sixteen for the sanitation department. This will also be used for the air burner, uh, area. Estimated cost is a hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and seven with twenty cents. Uh, staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved, Mayor Protem.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the John Deere five forty-four K loader via the byboard five fifteen dash sixteen for the sanitation department as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item four point seven, authorization to purchase, purchase a twenty-eighteen Peterbilt three, three forty-eight roll-off truck via byboard contract five twenty-one dash sixteen. This truck will also be used, this, actually, this truck, we do have a container that we're gonna use this truck for. Uh, the ashes will be placed there and then we'll be taking them to the landfill. Uh, estimated cost is a hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred thirty-three with twenty-five cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a twenty-eighteen Peterbilt three forty-eight roll-off truck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item. Mr. Benson?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council. I have before you item four point eight is the authorization to accept art donation from artist Shirley Ingram and the Upper Valley Art League from, uh, the Mission Event Center. This three-piece abstract painting is titled Citrus Valley and is, and is valued at thirty-five hundred dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Here's a motion and, um, a second to accept the art donation from artist Shirley Ingram from the Upper Valley Art League for the Mission Event Center. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Uh, Mayor Protem, uh, both.
Carries unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, both Shirley Ingram and Maxie Lou Link are here, present in the audience today. They just wanted to.
Would you, do you have a?
Thank you.
Do we have a copy of it?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Persons, Director Benson, Director Maxie Lou Link, and the City Manager. I just wanted to tell you how grateful I am to be a part of the Upper Valley League, and I wanted to thank you for your support in our facility and always responding to our needs. It's such an important center for the community and for the artists, and we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you want me to say just a little bit more about the painting, I'd be willing to, okay. Maxie Lou was so excited about the opening of the Mission Event Center, so she came into the gallery and she said, "Let's go, I want to show it to you." So, all right, we went over there and I walked into the lobby and I thought, "Wow, this is a fantastic event center." And then my wheels started rolling and I looked up at those walls and over at the counter and I thought, I, I, when I learned of the theme, that was the most important part, was the citrus theme. You couldn't have done anything better, folks, nothing better. So, my wheels started rolling and I could just see the citrus colors in abstract version, my version, for a painting that I wanted to create. And I thought, "Nobody's told me to do this. Maybe they'll turn me down." But I had to do it, and what happens, happens. So, now we're at this point, and I just want to tell you how I freely present and donate this painting to the city of Mission for the Mission Event Center. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Shirley. I fell in love with it. You can't have it either. I'm sorry. Uh, I have also now before you item four point nine is the authorization to accept artwork donation, uh, from Mission artist Kika Curry for the Mission Event Center. This, uh, painting is titled The Roma of My City and is also valued at thirty-five hundred dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved, second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the artwork donation from Mission artist Kika Curry, uh, for the Mission Event Center. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item.
I have item four point ten is the authorization to purchase shade structure for park facilities via state-approved byboard contract number five one two dash one six. This purchase through Park Place Recreation Designs, Inc., is for Banworth Pool and the two new dog parks located at Banworth Park and Benson Palm Community Park. The cost of purchase and installation of the two structures for the pool, for Banworth Pool are thirty-five feet by thirty-five feet and is a cost of thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. The cost and purchase of the installation of two forty-by-twenty-foot-shaped structures for each of the dog parks is valued at fifteen thousand six hundred, uh, thirty-one dollars and ten cents each for a total cost of thirty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty cents. Staff and city manager recommend set purchase and installation.
Okay, are there any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the purchase shades, uh, for the structures at the park facilities via the byboard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Thank you. Uh, four point eleven is approval of resolution number. Thank you, of the city council of city of Mission, Texas, authorizing, authorizing the submittal of a grant application to PetSafe of Knoxville, Tennessee. This grant, uh, is for the, uh, use of dog park at Banworth Park. Staff and city council recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve resolution fifteen forty-six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Item four point twelve is the acceptance of the quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, and interest earned for six months, also ending March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. The total increases to investment balances was three million two hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety cents, and total decreases were seven million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents, leaving an outstanding investment balance of twenty million three hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Interest earned year to date is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the quarterly reports of investments as presented for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item four thirteen is the approval of the March two thousand eighteen financial statements. The adjusted beginning fund balance was twenty-five million three hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Total revenues for the month were six million nine hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, and total expenditures were nine million three hundred and six thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, leaving an adjusted ending fund balance of twenty-two million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to, um, approve the financial statements, uh, ending March two thousand eighteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Chief?
Madam, uh, Mayor Protem, City Council. Item four point one four is approval of implementation of three speed humps from the nineteen-hundred block of Adams Street to the two-thousand block of Pena Street in accordance with the city emission court of ordinance of Division Five Speed Humps, section one-ten point three fifty-one to section one-ten three fifty-four. The Mission Police Department has received several complaints of vehicular traffic traveling at a high rate of speed making it unsafe for residents. Additionally, the residents of the neighborhood met and complained about the number of vehicular accidents which resulted in a high amount of property damage. On May first, two thousand eighteen, the Traffic Safety Committee met and recommended the installation of these speed humps. Staff and the city managers office request approval. These are a total of three speed humps, um, this particular roadway, uh, Adams Street, as you can see, curves to the right and becomes Pena Street. Um, obviously, in my tenure here in the last thirty years, we've had a lot of accidents there, and we continue to have them. Uh, we're hoping that the installation of these speed humps will slow down the traffic, especially on the curvature of the roadway, and hopefully avoid some of these, uh, accidents that we've been having there in that, in that particular area of town.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. I'm just gonna add that I have personal experience. I used to live at that second house right there at 2007 Pena, and I had a car come inches away to come into my home.
One of the things about two weeks ago, and the resident was at our meeting, we had a car that was going northbound, went off the roadway. That second house on the right-hand side hit two cars, and one of the cars actually went and hit the garage, hit the home. So...
Yes.
We have... The city has installed some barriers there, but at the same time, you know, unfortunately over the years, we've had a lot of accidents there, and I think the city has taken some preventive measures, but obviously, I think that the city manager's office and working with the street department and the police department were trying to do this, adding some more barriers in that area. And I think overall, I think that it'll be a good effect in trying to slow down traffic and avoiding some of these accidents as well.
Hopefully, this'll work.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the implementation of three speed bumps from the 1900 block of Adams Street to the 2,000 block of Pena Street. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And I want to thank the neighbors for the area that we're here.
And I did north of her, and then his business been knocked out four times.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm gonna keep voting that.
Okay, well...
I want to thank you for... There's been a change in the traffic already with the...
Right. The rams. Right.
I can leave at night.
And they have put the yellow marker around the curb.
Yes. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you so much. Chief, do you have...
Item 4.15 is the approval of the implementation of four speed humps on Paseo Encantado between Inspiration Road and Schubach Road in accordance with the City of Mission Code of Ordinance's Division 5 Speed Humps, Section 110.351 to Section 110.354. The Mission Police Department has received several complaints on vehicular traffic traveling at a high rate of speed making it unsafe for residents. Additionally, the residents of the neighborhood met and complained about a number of vehicular accidents in the area as well. On May 1st, the Traffic Safety Committee met and recommended the installation of the speed humps after input from area residents. The speed humps will be placed between Sol Dorado Street and Rancho del Rey, Minas de Oro Street and Resplandor, Viento Dorado Street and Tecate Drive, Templo Dorado Street and Camino Real Street. Staff and city manager request approval of this. Again, a number of complaints. This is a very long stretch of roadway between Inspiration and Schubach Road, and of course, we've had several accidents, especially there's a particular intersection of Moore Field and Paseo Encantado where we've had some accidents there as well. But obviously, the concern is the long stretch of roadway. The street is kind of narrow, and the homes above the roadway vary... There's not a lot of separation, and that's why a big concern there. And obviously, we're requesting, after reviewing it myself, our city engineer, and the fire chief, we are recommending that these four speed humps be installed at these locations to help alleviate some of that speed on these vehicles.
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the implementation of four speed bumps on Paseo Encantado Street between Inspiration Road and Schubach Road. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Mayor, City Council, item 4.16 is authorization to accept the 2017 Stone Garden Grant from the Office of the Governor for the FY 2018-2019 grant year, grant number 3172903. The total amount of the grant award is $250,000. The grant will allow... Will provide $100,000 in overtime funds to increase patrol presence in and around the U.S.-Mexican border. $150,000 of the funds have been allocated for one Skywatch tower at a cost of $154,413. The remaining amount of $4,413 will be paid through the drug account. This grant will be in effect from September 1st, 2018, through August 31st, 2019. Staff and city manager request approval to accept this grant from the Office of the Governor.
Move to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and accept the grant of $250,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 417.
Item 417, Mayor, City Council's authorization to purchase computers and related equipment via U.S. Commodities IT Products and Service Contract, contract number is 4400006644. The purchase of seven desktop computers with software licenses and related equipment for our new communications center and Identification Bureau office. The total cost of the equipment is $28,903.37. The purchase will be made through the Mission Police Department Federal Drug Forfeiture Account. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize the purchase of the computers and equipment for the U.S. Commodities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 418.
Thank you.
Roger.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. 4.18 is authorization to purchase via Soul Source from recorded books for electronic services and library material. We received $75,000 from the county for this project for the purchase of e-content in the form of ebooks, audiobooks, and e-magazines. Items will be made available for checkout by the public. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and receive $75,000 from the county for the purchase of some equipment in the library? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 419.
Yes, sir. Form 4.19 is authorization to award bid for the purchase of a security system for the library. We received 15 bid responses. We'd like to award Simply Vast. They were the lowest responsible bid or meeting all specifications. The cost will be $14,631.93. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do you need a motion for the lowest responsible bid?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
430, Mr. Asorel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.20 is for the approval of an ordinance. Back on 2017, the City Council reached an agreement via a resolution with the Rio Valley Switching Company, allowing the city to open the crossing at Oblete and close the crossing at Leonor Street. This ordinance is necessary to accomplish the objective of that agreement. Staff and city manager are recommending approval. Item 420 is now before you.
What's your ordinance number?
4634.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4634? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 421, Mrs. Lermar.
Mayor and Council, 4.21 is authorization to purchase beer, wine, and liquor for the resale at the Mission Event Center. Staff is requesting to purchase beer, wine, liquor, and for the resale at the Mission Event Center from a couple of vendors, including Glaziers Beer and Beverage, LNF Distributors, Holiday Wine and Liquor, and Feldman's Market Center in the amount not to exceed $15,525 through the end of this fiscal year, September 30th, 2018. Staff is recommending approval.
This is not to exceed $15,000?
Correct, for this year.
Each vendor or all...
No, as a total.
Total vendor.
Correct.
Do we need a motion to approve the authorization? We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 422.
Mayor and Council members, item 4.22 is the approval of substantial amendment for action plan 2017-2018. We're requesting approval of substantial amendment which allocates $2,000 to Boys and Girls Club to provide partial waivers for the summer program fees for at-risk and low-income youth. Citizens Advisory Committee recommended approval. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the $2,000 going to the Boys and Girls Club? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 423.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Come before you, seeking authorization to reject and resolicit bids for the replacement of a 10-inch high service pump and motor at the North Water Treatment Plant. The City of Mission has accepted and opened two bid responses for this project. The staff recommend rejecting and resoliciting bids due to both bitter and not meaning terms and conditions. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to reject and resuscitate. Yes, sir. All right, so moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize the rejection of the bids until we...
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 424.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 4.24 is the authorization to terminate contract with Shannon Chemical Corporation for the purchase of liquid copper sulfate. Shannon Chemical Corporation has had an existing contract with the City of Mission since November 2017. Shannon Chemical Corporation failed to keep current EPA and NSF certification as required by the contract terms. Staff and city manager recommend to terminate contract.
So moved.
We do have a motion.
Second.
And a second to go ahead and authorize the termination of this contract to Shannon Chemicals Corporation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 425.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, item 4.25 is the authorization to solicit bids for liquid copper sulfate for North and South Water Treatment Plants. Liquid copper sulfate is needed by the Public Works Department as a part of the water treatment process. The contract terms will be for one year with two one-year renewal options. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids.
Do we need a motion to authorize to solicit for bids?
Move to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize to solicit for bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
426. Budget amendments.
Yes. Item 426 is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have three. One in the general fund, solid waste fund, and the police federal sharing fund. The general fund is a reclassification of $20,250 for equipment needed to be purchased by the police department and the fire department. The solid waste fund is a budget amendment of $150,000 in expenditures. This is for the allocation of funds necessary for the installation of infrastructure related to the air burning system implemented by staff. And the PD federal sharing fund is an amendment of $91,247 in expenditures, which is the allocation of funds received from the federal forfeiture system for various police department projects that will be completed in the current fiscal year. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and approve the budget amendments?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Right to us. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 427, Mr. Perez. Resolution number, what is it?
5047.
5047.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Resolution... Approve the resolution of the City of Mission and Encore. On April 5th, 2018, Encore filed the city an application to amend its distribution cost recovery factor seeking to increase its revenue requirements by approximately $19 million. So in conjunction with this request, Encore on May 1st, 2018, also filed an application to decrease rates based on the Tax Cut and Job Act of 2017. This resolution denies Encore's request to amend its distribution cost recovery factor to increase its revenue requirement and further waive the requirement for notice to City of Mission to decrease the rates under the Tax Cuts and Job Act of 2017. This resolution further authorizes the city manager to retain the services, legal services of Adams and Reese, LOP, to represent the city in both proceedings to determine what further strategy, including settlement, to pursue. Staff recommendation is the approval of this resolution.
We do need a... We do need a motion to approve resolution 5047.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
We do have... Do you have any comments, sir?
No comments, sir.
I don't have any comments either. We do have an executive session.
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code, Section 551.001, Mayor.
We do have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
A second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Need a motion to go into... So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.